The government council and our administration. But in a way, everybody who is here, everybody who is here, whether I admit it or not, for the last sixty days or so, we have received some level of support and cooperation. So I hope this plan for ourselves is going to be good. Let's form a strong identity. Team is an acronym that means together equals more. Let's bond together, let's be friends. I'd like also to thank all the people on the IT booth who have managed to help us. I'd like to thank all those who have led this university, Polytechnic University, from the acting VC, past directors, I don't know all of these, the director, Mrs. Eke. Why is the director of ours, his team is not delivering on their responsibility this morning? That's the way of work. When they went to the library and people didn't use their projector, so they did not deliver. We must be result-focused and result-oriented. They knew we had this meeting. I'd also like all of these to please stand recognition. Where the colleagues, please, let's acknowledge them this morning. We are the members. And we know their names. Dr. Akuru, Dr. Babkoli, Dr. Dembélé, Dr. Kulu, this is Ralunian. And that's what I call him. And Dr. Mrs. Wando, please sit down. I'd like also to acknowledge all our directors. If you're directing the university, please stand where your expertise is. Director, I am directing well, like every guy here said. Please stand recognition. I know Mr. Kulu, I know DAP, I know several others. I know Mr. Kueye. That young man, I trained you, he's your DJ. And never mind, he's my mentor in the field. All right. All the trainers, please stand. And everyone in the room, please stand. We'd like to thank you very much for all the work you're doing. I don't know many of the members, but I'd like to acknowledge you. And thank you very much. I'd also like to thank Professor Maguru and the team that have guided us. And finally, this morning, I'd like to thank all the professors at the university. Any professor here would like to thank you. All right. If they should come to the front, please come to the front. Somebody said, yes, I mean, the university belongs to the professors. It's a statement of truth. If you remember the Senate of Rome, when we come to the Senate from, you needed to have been an accomplished person to be given the chair in the Senate. So please, let's acknowledge the professors who have come to the front. We are invited. Please come to the front, sir. Very good to hear. What I want to say in Ibado, it was a pleasure for them to ask me to come to be visiting professor to Ibado. See, when you become a professor, you are a pride to your institution. That is it. So we celebrate you, sir. So if you don't like it, join us. All right. Now, let's talk about ourselves. What are our strengths? We've got a large number of people, about nine hundred plus. Fantastic number. They say two heads are better than one. But my reply is, say, two good heads. Because a thousand bad heads are worse than no heads. We've got large, large buildings. This campus is huge. Whether it's zooloery, which is small, or it's subtle. We've got beautiful landscape and buildings. Although directors of our city do a lot there. If the place is bushy, they need to cut it plenty. We've got government support. I mean, government made everybody, even though I'm aware of issues about respecification, but in the minimum, salaries have been personalized. And in fact, we're very wonderful. You know that the chief lecturer here earns more than the professor in university. I've been professor at the same level now for about ten years. Level seven, state ten. Your chief lecturer earns more money than I make in all my life. So there's no reason to complain. All right. What are our weaknesses? What are our weaknesses? We are very slow as an institution. Very slow, unacceptably slow. The women get to me after and I'm asking, why is this late? My staff know that on a daily basis, I treat all my needs. I send things out from the... I can hold them for three days, but I do not. We're pretty slow. Fortunately, we do take responsibilities. Somebody says, oh, I sent a memo. Memos and papers are inanimate objects. If nobody pushes it, it remains with somebody stable. Then, there's a lot of individualism. Everybody is, like they say many places, too many chiefs and no Indians. Too many of us in the system. There is not too much of cooperation I have seen. Each person is doing his own thing. And our ID room is rather low. Maybe we're doing about two billion per year, out of which is spent almost ninety-nine percent. I've seen us ask for money. We do one meeting in three places. So I escape on a random third quarter for evening, day, midnight, and early morning. That is Mr. Kulu's expertise. All right. But of course, we're in Lagos. We're in the opportunities. A prayer is never, let me free to it, and all that is there. There's a large market we can tap into. We also have challenges. One of it is lack of cohesion, high cost of power. Our expenses are pretty too high. Pretty, pretty too high as an institution. And we don't have a good, positive public image. There was a problem with that in Lasso, we were back here. So that in twenty-twenty, the Times High Education Ranking, I was director, Lasso was ranked the second best university in Nigeria. That was the work I did for Lasso. And so it's something we can do here and move it forward. I'm aware, I give concerns of staff. So let me mention them. I started promotion issues, power issues, prosperity issue, the classification issue. We're dealing with them. If a man wants to become a mother, she's got to become pregnant. And she's got to wait for nine months. If she has that big a several months, we're stuck about pre-maturity, preterm birth. Nine months means for us, medicine at least has to seven weeks for decision. So there is a time and process. And so, in taking our time, we're dealing with issues that have to be dealt with. These were issues that we still have devices, I also would not be paid. And I asked them, when did you apply? It's in June. I said, I wasn't there in June. They say, I was there in July. They sometimes say August, in going to contractors. If we couldn't pay you at that time, there were reasons. And we will deal with those things as we move on. Some financial facts, which we need to say to everybody here. We spend about half a billion, half a billion naira each month to run this university. And you get about, maybe fifty-five percent of it from government. So if I'm not generating money, we can't pay salary. That's the truth. That's all you get. Next year is going to become four hundred million. If you get all of that, even at that, you still have twenty-five percent shortage to run the university. If you never know, this are very, very fact, the boss is there. You can ask him. But then, when I came, this is how the life is. Almost nothing million naira I have to deal with, as I write, and it's still growing. So some people said, there was no power. Yes, diesel, what I meant was this one million. If I divide diesel like that, it will become one hundred and fifty million by now. Because to run this place every week, you need about eight thousand liters of diesel. And the current price, that's about eight million naira. So you multiply eight by four, that's about two million. If you add the sold and truly, probably never four... How do you explain to Mr. Governor, as an institution, we are spending five hundred million naira on this? How do you explain that? You know, the problem is that because it does... So who must find those, generate the money to follow this? I agree, they are old. And they were old before I came, by several disabilities and assets. But it's for us, we need to change the way we spend money. We've had some meetings. I've said, why not pay? People have asked, they want to come outside. We don't have money. Because we cannot just spend money because there is budget provision. Budget is but a guide. Well, we don't participate in it, but we've got to deal with. And salaries are first-line charge, non-negotiable. I would rather have a hundred contractors than a woman member of staff. That's very clear. And I'm going to be very clear that, yes, we owe you money. Somebody said, if I pay this a lot of one million, one hundred staff will not get salary. So I would deal with it this way. I would wait at my own time. And that's the way I'm going to run the place. We have represented Senate. Again, Senate has had seven meetings in the last two months. That's a lot of work I've pushed through. We are met in the Goraian MP Committee. I knew this advance for more time for their performance. So they're delaying their performance. Hold the responsibility on yourself because you didn't submit in time. So they asked us for one month more, so that everybody does, like they say, Kulu temper. We're putting the process in place. We're building a master's culture. We're becoming more tangible. It's very key. Like we have noticed, I drive my car. They should have a car when I arrive. But I said, goodbye the car. Can I show you further? I've asked for one salary in the last two months. And I'm not earning money from last summer. I told them, I'm going to a new place. I don't ask how I've survived, I will tell you one day. All right. So to run this place for the next five years, what's the goal? What's the vision? Is come to an upon impact. And it's a good opportunity for us to have the greatest impact, to have the greatest outcome for our university at this beginning. It's six areas. And it's to put us on the right and sound footing. Impact has six areas. Infrastructure development, manpower, prosperity, productivity and prosperity of students and staff. A, the master's culture of academic excellence and research. C stands for catalyst for the level of Lagos State agenda and T is town, government and industry partnership. I have potentialness to cancel first-day meeting and develop a little bit more. But I'll go through this very rapidly. But I'd like me to pay attention to the things we need to do to make them work. I want to talk about infrastructure development in line with the master plan and with the new curriculum and academic standards that I just learned yesterday. Professor Poplar is my mentor and driving that. So talking about facilities, laboratories, studios. What must we do to get that? Funding from government, donations, endowments, resources of funds. If I'm going to get more business to this place, these are the things we must do. There are about one seventy-four universities in Nigeria. Why should such one give us money? If we do not deserve it. The cake is not big enough. So by going to do this, we have to talk to all the big people, all the financialists. And they must consider that we are worth giving their monies to. Manpower development, as far as I see, manpower is the greatest agent for change. So we need to improve our skills. We need to have organization workshops. We'll do one in January. We need to train people, we need to send people outside and inside Nigeria. Such one is helping us do a lot of that. And so, if you want for training, please apply early. Don't come to my table and say you're going to meeting tomorrow. The answer you get is no. Because meetings and trainings are not an emergency. We are also going to look for, I'm going to do it in such a way that is equitable. If you have come for one training one year, why must you go for yourself? I'm already following you. Are you the only one? So we know this to be my friend, but everybody is my friend. So we want to be transparent. Somebody had done so a meeting in June. I want to go to another meeting in December and I say, you went in June. Can we scrap this, your meeting in Abuja in December? They had no objection. That's it. We need to also be looking at, listen, sponsor Nigeria. That can be sponsored, whether it's the Wellcome Foundation or somebody in Nigeria or something engineering. These are the things we must do. But the activity, what is that for? Which is just a joke all of us do. If you don't sign it, they will take you to prayer mountains. They will call your pastor, call your mother, call your father. That manager doesn't want me to promote it, but truly do any promotion. We must change our attitude. I know government is hard to change, but we keep doing our perform. But we want to celebrate excellence. Could some services will be supportive to this, to us? Will expand our health services, will improve sporting facilities there. So what we need to do, we need to push new shows of income. We need to train us in new skills. We need to set up various schemes beyond. I probably have seen, as of today, maybe about twenty loans. And we approve them. About a cycle, car, housing, everybody is like, the money we finish, everybody is rushing to the VC. Apply, apply, and we approve them. No wallet. We need to find new models of financial empowerment. Not that we service one group and we are collecting money four times. That would not work. This is probably where we need to work more. I'm going to be having new students. Teaching, research, innovation, community services, creativity. I agree that we must change to make sure that our curriculum fits the new core curriculum and meet my academic standards. We need to teach us about how to teach people. We all gain personalities in this, but not in education. We need to do mentoring, that's the job of us professors. We will support student development. Pro release of results. I'm amazed at how results do not get the least of time. That has to change, even for students of the Polytechnic. We want to run an E university. That's what us is doing now. Everything is almost paper. And what we don't do, and definitely true, you don't print anything. What we print is a final approval by head of country. Everything that is by email. We have a good internet. And we try to answer that. The emails we have here, they don't work. And we have to change it. Any email you can read on your phone that not Gmail is worthless. So I sense you need to come back to them there. We need to find new programs. Marriage, marriage and marriage technology, real technology. Many things we can do. The Lagos system builds environment. We can do a lot to train people, particularly dean of environmental sciences, architecture, dean of engineering, plenty to do. We produce engineers who don't know where the bloods of the car are. It will say it's not their job. That is not correct. They want to be catalysts for the Lagos State agenda. Want to be the solution provider. Who want to be standing the stern policy of the state. What must we do here? We've got to do strategic training. We've got to provide new solutions. For example, in prosperous states, they have a nice solution for blood bank. That whenever they need blood anywhere, it can be moved free. The person who developed wasn't a doctor. There's a lot we can do. I think we have to change because I'm going to give you security guidance about money. So all this cash, the boss is giving everybody, you have to stop. You cannot do more than hundred... Individual. And maximum five hundred thousand naira. So all this go to bank for that money will stop. All right. So we must change with the times. Those are government policies that are unchallengeable in court. What I said is, run an electronic system of banking. So even our lives. You know, right now, they are driving cars without drivers. They can tell this, I'm going somewhere. If I, you know, in the years to come, you won't need a car. You can ask, you go to drink with the car. And the car will come and say, I'm here to take Dr. Lu, Dr. Mityelu or Mr. Dr. Akuru. And the car will come, I'm going to Kuru Do. The car will take you to Kuru Do. Very simple. You want to order breakfast, it will order for you. You want to deliver the car, so life is changing and becoming automated. And so, as individuals, as a university, we are seeing that way. In the electric vehicle economy now, they are facing now petrol cars. These cars are becoming powered, not even by gas, electronic cars alone. Even planes are now that do this to do test flights for planes that are powered either by solar or some other gas, but not possible. So we cannot remain like dinosaurs. It's dead, I'm buried, I'm forgotten. We've got to change. All right. So last part of it, town government partnership. We've got to partner with industry. Universities are not created to be doing blue research, blue sky research, you know. We should be doing transitional research, stuff that has meaning. For example, Kuru is here by the lagoon. What can we do with all the fish? A prayer Kuru are here, they produce cassava. Why are we always producing raw materials? Why can we not add improved availability? Why can't you not think about what we can do to support these school students, to artisans, to, for example, in chemistry, can they partner with CAP to produce weather-resistant things? Many things we can do, but in all, last city in Nigeria, we just do what we want. Harvard makes about over one billion dollar every year from research and development. We make one billion naira. See the difference? Is that what they made since the thirty-six? Yes, but it didn't start one day. It was built by people like us. If you want to become the top university in the world or in Nigeria, we've got to do a lot of this. So what we need to do here? All right. We must work with the community. We must work with industries. We must begin to do joint curriculum development. In UK now, you can't start a new program without talking to the industry practitioners. And so what do you want of that place to be able to do? And these are the things we must be doing to do. But I would like to do, my job, my philosophy is to have a different policy to live by example. Like what I've done, I get to work the foremost of us. And I don't leave at the double year or case you, I live very far. And so, what's way to influence us, make us think, motivate us. And if you have any problems, we'd like to consider them individually. So I have a different policy for members of staff. For the day, if you're writing a memo and you are not a direct report to me, I will not look at your memo. Your memo must go through the system. You're head of unit, you're HOD, you're D. And I told all the people, you put to the device and sell off. Don't just sign, put a comment. Don't be afraid, if you don't agree, say you don't agree. Don't say my mouth come as what's here. Why do you have become a leader? They must talk about you. This amount of leadership, wasn't worry abused by, abused by a young boy, like of recent. It's freedom of speech. They are asking, is it not free? Say you abuse me, I have no problem with this. I will not support a bull or solar that I've been on here. So what's the problem? So if somebody abused you, wow, that's not a problem. I said, this was not anything. You are correct, he doesn't know. But it's got to employ people that know they can do the work. We are told, we are comfortable. Because our father, he won't be, it's almost ninety years. When he was director of NBC, somebody rushed to his office and he told the story. I was including with him. This was about nineteen ninety-seven. He said, the teacher said, this man was abusing you, said he don't know anything. And my father said, is that all? What is your problem? He said, the man is right. I don't know anything. What I need to do is to find people who know what I mean to work for me. That's my job. So what are our priorities? Accountability. If you send me figures, I will look at them in place. It's like you have, like you have, like you have aged. If you send many memo, I will read it. If it's not grammatical errors, I will underline it. We have got, and I say the Lord, I ask myself, why we do this like this? We've got to change. Excellence requires attention to details. I prepared this slide only last night, after I got home, but in turn I throw. We must work very hard. We've got to be resourceful. We've got to be innovative. We must provide solution. And we must change from entitlement mentality to an entrepreneurial university orientation. To see what we can do. We must look for solution. We must look for how to earn money. So we have to make the university better. So we have done a lot of this. We are, we are going to combine master education, much better. Admission is in progress. Let me say this. Please, we do not sell admission. I have probably received almost five hundred or more requests from all of us. Some have sent in eight names, ten names, seven names. Why? Someone follow one billion. You see, why, 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 why not careful? And we're going to admit less than two thousand students. Out of sixteen thousand applicants. So it's a ratio rejection rate of one in eight. So anybody sending me, even people that are not related to. So why we said, put your name? You didn't know what's in the trap for you. So I know people that have sent five names, seven names. What for? So if you said they didn't give you anybody, the space is not there. Some of you that have sent me names, I am just smiling beside me. When we have finished my this, this discretion, the priority list on master staff is biological children. Family. So this, my cousin, my friend, fine, if you ask us, we'll consider them. But we must remember that if we feel despised by people, we know what are the omone of one that are until they young. Or if they protest against us, how to defend it in government? My father didn't know anybody. I did jam, scored very close to three hundred marks. People came to announce to me, my father's house at Yaba, that my name was on the jam list. That was in Nigeria, that was food. And we must report to it. We must return to it. Some, you know, you can't do that for it. Because I don't want to tell the Queen, jam for his names. It was strictly by performance. And we must go back to that. Yes, of a discretion after, like we let the buffet on again. And to she did the baguette, the baguette, she had to go with the money. So we've done all of this. And at the end of the sixth month, we hope we will be able to do division of the first of four year. People who are doing biology, who are doing social sciences, who want to create mix serve. At the end of the fifth, they are those who are doing, I agree, engineering and architecture, what to. Even if I'm not here, the next receive will inherit a good set of students to manipulate. You don't have to finish everything. We want to be sure that we're able to improve in research, we're able to have patents, we're able to have annual reports, we're able to own our account as a university. All right. So work in progress, admission is in progress. We're doing a sub session to solve network problems, providing medicines with the care electric. We're going to have hostels that will build. There are plans to do that. So that we will have built homes for students and the one new, new tenants. All right. We will love our energy power plants, solar in the places that matter. And we must bring to talk about new and elegant programs. I'm about to finish. While we're discussing with Harvard University, we're discussing with Manchester University. I've spoken with a great group of discussions with most of the severe medical veterinary school and with a certain foundation. So we are already beginning to give us ways to build a global brand for this new university. And the things can satisfy it. Our future plans, let's look what you mentioned, idea. We have to develop a strategic plan for this university. And my goal is to develop a ten-year strategic plan. So that when I leave my successor, we'll have another five years to work with and plan for the next ten years. You must have let us develop a twenty-four-year plan that each VC gave and give into. By the way, the person who says I don't realize my friend, who are both provost together. So we're going to do a lot with them. Want to cover financial sustainability. We did one in Lasso, we can do more. Look at how we can... And you see, when the cake is too small, is when they fight. Have you ever seen when people are eating together and you have one piece of meat? One alone, man, tea. But when you go to the house of the rich, a name child has his own plate and has five pieces of meat. In fact, we leave it and we don't freeze the food. So let us change. I had a invite of by an opportunity to let us get more, more on the table. In closing this morning, brethren, what's your role? You've got to put in your best. You've got to improve that yourself. I urge you to be responsible. I urge you to be a good ambassador for this university. In fact, all of us here, we are the vice and service. It is who they will meet for, the one they come to directly come there to talk to me. So if you are rude to the people, if you're not tolerant, if you come late, if you hide files, if you... So, if you are rude to the people, if you're not tolerant, if you come late, if you hide files, if you collect bribe, we take you good person for the university and we shall deal with you. We must ask questions. Don't conclude without knowing the fact, oh, this is a business, we don't do this, oh, let's stop rumor mongering. Ask questions, seek to be informed. Don't hear, don't listen to hearsay, ask your answer the fact me. If you don't know, please send me a text. My number is very simple to know, I can give you this money, is 0803? Send it to me, I've got my number for the last 20 years. But please, be bold to put your name. If you are not bold to put your name, I will not respond. And if you come to report in to me, I will ask you sit down and call here to say, like by that so by, is it true? All those who are concerned, let me know that I respond as much as possible, as quickly as possible. People I know, people I don't know, within the space of human limitations. Because I do not work for MTA and I'm not a telephone operator. In conclusion this morning, this mission is achievable, we'll work with everyone of the colors. I ask you again, please support us. Please support us. Please support us. Please support us. Be our ambassador, please work with us. I can't do it alone, if I let me give you another assignment, please pray for the vice chancellor. It's a, it's a institution. The time to invest in energy, in thinking, in effort, in doing the work with new strength is now. It is now. It is now, so that we can get adequate and commercially return on investment. Please again, work with us. I thank you for your attention.
Mr Vice Chancellor, thank you very much for the beautiful presentation. Shall we all give a round of applause for your performance? The next item on the agenda is questions and answers. Have any question for me or my, please feel free to ask the vice chancellor. Questions please. Your question must be very brief, you must mention your name and college.
Thank you very much. Very, very encouraging. My first question is, oh, you come here from college of environmental design, oh, you come here, what do you bring that? College of environmental design and technology. On each of CCMS and BMS, which one are we attracted following? We have done a lot of work on BMS and it was just three days or so, we are getting something like CCMS. And I tried to go through some of the curriculum under the CCMS. Like building tech, something about furniture, to specialize in furniture. To me, it's not, it will not be too good for us, need to look at this very well. Then the second question is, the question of IGR. As a university, are we allowed to run open distance landing and ramp up type programs? I'm much, much concerned.
Dr. Lee Revo, two. Any other question, three, four, five. Five questions in the four systems. Five in the four systems. The next person is, number two.
Thank you very much sir, and thank you for your wonderful presentation. I commend your vision for our university and I pray God we have you, an achievement of this magnitude. Thank you very much sir. One of the most important. The provision of electricity. Most times I get here around 7:00 in the morning, so as to beat traffic. You get to the office and then you discover that you cannot do anything. We are not in engineering now, we've been told that we supply with electricity for about an hour in a day. And so, that's our feat. Lempa has not regularly appropriated. I was delighted and elated when I saw the presentation, substitution for power generation. I had a feeling that has to do with power distribution, not generation, but I'm coming to the issue of generation. Particularly alternative power supply. I know that in this, with the legacy institution, there have been attempts to really explore power generation. Our E university, E operations cannot happen until we have power supply. I want us to look at the area of maybe, even if it is from raw, I mean from waste or from other ones. If we can get the funding and the support from the government, so that we have power supply here. Yes, the power distribution facilities that have been installed, they will be quite okay, they may improve our supply. But that depends still on what comes from outside. We will need to look at how we get power locally. Yes, generating locally. Well, towns and cities are all over here, ecology service not adequately supplied. And so, if we are picking power from anywhere, it's what is available and they will give us. I happen to be on the thing to order the money and retreats and during last day, we were. Okay, thank you.
Number three please, mentioning protocol, one minute to the point. We should commence with hopefully, three.
Mr Vice Chancellor, members of the ITC, my name is Fermy Oshun, from the science department, college of basic sciences. Uh, what's that, the first thing that struck me about your press is that, actually perhaps the most used phrase in your address was, what do we have to do now? What do we have to do now? And that gives the impression of a man of action, a man that wants to drive things, a man that wants to make things happen for people. That's beautiful sir. I have a lot of things that I would quickly love to call your attention to sir. In fact, interestingly, many of the things I take in my mind, already listed them as problems you are tackling, I would just want to give some insight to some of these things. Number one is the upper form. Now, the upper form, virtually everybody was precluded from promotion by the memo that we were given. Based on the fact that we're just designated. That means, in the memory, it was spent three years in the position that we're now. But, the law of the starting university makes very clear that our employment in the polytechnic is counted as continuing in the university. So, automatically, that should make somebody who in the polytechnic has spent three years in a position and due for promotion, should be promoted in the university. Uh, sir, I want you to help us look at that.
One minute please, one minute.
Yes, sir. Sir, I want to also say that you have been grossly misrepresented and there is a need for many of these type of meetings. Because we are hearing that when people was emotional about this money that is whole, you stay good to protect it for every money. I didn't. And I was wondering, how would a CEO say that? But I'm so happy, when you came and you said you have inherited all assets and liabilities and you are looking at that as business. Now, one of those assets, one of those liabilities sir, is that I want to call your attention to it, uh, there is an eighth month arruda with something. Having said that sir, having said that sir, I want to say that personalities are, um, geared on, um, fired on, and, uh, and very. Number four sir, number four. Having said that sir, I want to say that personalities are, um, geared on, um, fired on, and, uh, and very. Number four sir, number four. Having said that sir, I want to say that personalities are, um, geared on, um, fired on, and, uh, and very. Number four sir. Number four sir, number four. Having said that sir, I want to say that personalities are, um, geared on, um, fired on, and, uh, and very.
Not being ones of, ask us a thing, what's your thing? How does common class do wrong? How does present wrong? How does we give our community? So, it's time to check the bridge, the management ring. Even four, four states will not be allowed to, the bad girl, there is about 5% of using call. So, these many four boys are asked to check, how does common class do wrong? Grant writing, you all have been a bunch of just wrong. I believe in love, some very heavy grants in Scottish law, it's time to wait for the whole pool break, the management ring. In fact, even universities as well, but right now, there is no one from there in the United States, where in South Africa. And the vice chancellor is the number one international center for human rights. So, when I go, I don't say I'm a doctor, I'm a vice chancellor, if I find it, if I find it's a law, if you have a 30 years worth of work like that, beating to the air in South Africa. Uh, probably over eight months sir. Oh, okay. I have got many consultants, who knows. Well, we will find, so my name is last week, right now, it's, it's a combination of both distribution and generation. There is a law that went, uh, generally power, like you know sir, it's a lot of war. Let me do today. I have got many consultants, who knows. It's a lot of. Well, we will find, so my name is last week, right now, for now, as a new university, yeah, you have proved, huh? Generation, it's a lot of war. Old time war, old time at this war. But, we have, we have, we have been saying, you know, but about half time for a war, you know, it's a lot. Well, we spent three years, so we have not, we have not read the letters to my word again, I will be starting some early program. Someone said about CCMS, in every sphere of life, there are little. And if you have comments, you can complain. But it is to the soldier, obey the national command. We are not from BMS to CCMS. Whatever comments you don't agree, I can share, the holy proof is, the vice president unveiled it, all this money. It's available, but we don't know. So, as if I'm about to discuss, but that's the way Nigeria is going and we will share it to you, they obey the national purpose. We are not from BMS to CCMS.
Five more questions, number one, two, three, four, five. Number one, mention your name.
Thank you very much sir. I know you spoke about me, you are a member of the university. But, I can just say, sir, calling you, uh, sir. Um, thank you for that openness and, uh, give the whole. Majorly what I want to bring nice sound to you, that, uh, you know, we are coming from some people, and there are some wrongs that were ignored. And they were trained, but who we call, and the woman who was me, who always wants at the wrong start to be correct the start. There is a concession committee that was set up some times back, and we shall submit their reports. Up to today, we have not said it, but that, and we know that the param and access management, they, and they should have, uh, probably, uh, that. Because as part of the assessment that we did, to, to, to this, actual reports, and it was a federal proper operation of the rocks. Thank you sir.
Number two please.
And we know that the param and access.
Thank you sir. Mention your name.
My name is.
My name is Paul, and I am so glad you saw this, very good, very good. Um, thank you very much, sir. My question is, I feel like a long, long, I'm a back question. Of saying, I'm proud, I'm impressed. I want to meet you. Question was, I think, I think, but this, standing before my speaker, who's in the basis. I know that twenty years, it's active, I'm investing, six years. Um, so, I, my question is, I want to say, I sent to your administration, this is about the reaction that was done when you were. And the, uh, not as late as I'm, as I'm showing. So this is my question, sir. My question is, at the university, my dear sir. Somebody has spent five years on a position, and they have been promoted to the next level of that position. And before in a, in a respect, I want to buy it, if you take years in the same position. That person now is now reclassified back to the entry points. Is it made of real surgery, which is presentation, not employees on the position? So, my question, I know, I get, I sent letter to the regulation, in the department, missing, and the combination to complete. And this is why I see a person after two months. The person is there, I follow me, which will let me cross, I don't have big wish. Now that you are here, just ask, for any of the, now that you are here. Now, now, you are here, sir. How, which, but I should say, my question is this, and I wish me, and it do I do? That show I can get to nature I want, it's now, it is. All the quality, sir. My name is, uh, this is, I'm here, I'm. Thank you, sir. Uh, I want to say that we have a size and a steel. And we are good. For the English country. And we through the vice chancellor and still. With the, with the unions. We mentioned on April, some the eight months areas. Yeah, I said, I said, because it looks. As of today, we are spread, and it's a more difficult. I also mentioned, I mean, it's. And we had a court case in the U K, which we got decided. Because we know we have a petition to withdraw. So that was settled, and we're union disney of relations on April. All these, the eight months area, of course. We, every day, but every company that costs. And I want to ask you. Most. I also asked the council, the vice chancellor, to plead to his president. That the source of the negro, this strong good drive, not his faith, his wish. Also. When for the last. I don't worry. I want to say, every company that costs, the last one. There are news of downsizing. I also asked the council. There are news of downsizing. And what have you and what have been. There are news of being. Instead of rejecting aspects of most civilization of Sarajevo. Sounds as for Ranga. I want to say this more like the last one. Because I said, nobody will use my book. Neither will be used our employee. Number four. Number four. Good morning, sir. One minute. Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chancellor. For the amazing presentation. But it's a combination of comments, suggestions. And ask question. My name is Dr. Valius Vagabirdum. Department of Marketing, where I look at like social sciences. Good morning, sir. Looking at your fish on, I can say. I was having a meeting with your division. On infrastructure. Like unfortunately, I could see your vision on road. My name is infrastructure. If you look at marketing force, I said, they are all. They're free or low, it's in a very poor condition. Sir, I'm here that the last eight years. Uh, for our common function, our mission. Most. Claim to have constructed roads in the. Look at it, the new roads, it may resist in the air. If lots of good that for vegan institutions. I assume because the coverage is possible for the promotion, I wish for this. Get through infrastructure. I want to explore this. I love what in me I have observed, I know how it was destroyed. The new roads destroyed. They can include the rules. Who's in our progress, vegan institution. Most of a source there. They can include everything, it's taken one. Please, I want to look at that. Here was this memo, a colleague not to report it abroad. Very, very interesting. They can include the rules. Who's in our progress, vegan institution. First one, a source there. In a day and night. We are a lot of men, I want to look at that. In office. Then I. Here was this memo. And when I come to my business, professional service. Very, very interesting. Have you guys have to talk to me this environment? That is come from your lack, that your lack is another war. We also want you to read the source there, another war. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. This very crucial. So when I saw, because I'm. No. When I saw, it's something I own. I would just do that as well. Hey, also important, especially in connecto, I prefer size. But trying to, oh, your business, we are not what you see. They are always seen. They are always, I don't know, how you research and work in the other environment. Thank you, your time. I have a word to say. I have a word to say that I'm sorry it. Not by far, thank you, sir. Don't have fun. Especially in connecto, I prefer. My question. My name is Dr. Kilar. See, it's. I have this information. And I want to say that. So I want to inform you. That there was a meeting with Dr. Carson. And Dr. Carson considered issue of reaction, reclassification. And Dr. Carson said. That after reclassification, they found, and we gave him a. For assessing this. On both academic and non-academic staff. And Dr. Carson specifically said. Clad. For Dr. Today. What we saw was upper form. And that upper form sincerely spoke in line that we like to shoot. It's a very good thing for me. That there are some cheap lectures in this school. That go there, here, this, that, ten, eighteen years ago. And I have a good cheap lecture about five numbers of the flag. And since then, it's very transitory. They have lectures in different universities. Despite the fact that they are in this school. But we are now being classified as senior lecturer. From my doctor, that's a paper. He says, if they will promote them to the next level. In education, we that is a cheap lecture, we now go to A P. And then after culture. For the council that we believe in said. Let all the papers be assessed, but many of them is. That's it, I want to tell you. The chairman, I want to inform you. That there was a memo that said that. Now, for sure, to be a member of the. See, it could be the pressure of that. That it is the condition of that, that they lay in. What they. They, they, the promotion is a service. Uh, my chairman is here, and I want to say that clear. There are these dog and entrance. For the assessment. You come by now, you best see. Sir, I want to inform you, if you click on the promotion. If you bring in P L. If you bring in cheap lecture. You are anything that will be for that, I love. So that is not the reason for. Your best promotion, the brand that is for that. Thank you very much. Um, I would say, I would say. I don't think it's appropriate to pump you the signal. And this could lose the condo of your community. It's an inappropriate, it's a torch right. It's a privileged position you are holding. I have been speaking, whether it might be showing, it might be your chair. It's like a positive review. And we should not tolerate it, I would say. Because it's a privileged position. And your chairman, the person to do, it's about the progress though. Say, that's all the same thing, someone here is upset, they are angry. It's part of what we must not. It's a privileged position you are holding. So it's very, I should not, I should not do this on your chair. But any of the missions should have been, been on that committee. We should make it in. But you are embarrassed, your chairman. I'm embarrassed, the second that you were so. By your condo, it's. And it's wrong. And so if you want to begin to add the vehicle. Not really that. Why don't you say this, especially the members of my university. You should make it in. They. Let us play it in. And they might, they go to get your condo. Where my freedom store is, I don't have this insult start. I just said, the chairman of that committee to begin to add the vehicle. I just better know much to be. Why don't you say this? It's not right, not much change. We don't tolerate this university. It's not a positive meeting. When the committee, young man, you're a good chairman. When they are there, we don't stop providing and adopting privileged information. It's not a problem, Dr. Laram. It's a person who wants to be. Number two. Uh, we are trying to deal with, we see competition requires kinds of big and challenges. And we cannot really believe over that, the chairman. For those who are also like, they think, we are reaching the bar. Everybody, they pride job, reaching the bar. But there is no comparison factor. That will contribute to a, into a professor. And so we're saying, the process will be gradual and slow. But the promotion is very easy to do. You know, I say so, it has a benefit date. Appointment is far worse. Will be. Because by the day, you are simply met a question. You are not sad. But my promotion is my city, you are so busy, but it is. Some three years, some three years. The fact is, you are simply met a question. Three years. I said, boy, I'm a sort of a hostess, I'm a dealer, I can't have a lot of quality. But it's why. Well, yes, he perpatant, I don't know, I'm a sort of a hostess. But the patient, yeah. Anybody now, everybody, they are committing to the nation. So we know how to set the way. And my friends are the professionals. Some people are meant for the professionals, I love. As I announced it. Even if I don't, my feelings, they are being, they are asking me, it's not. In last season, I just go to council. But there are patients in this, people are meant for the professionals. As for the construction. Who will try. And talk to. And I don't know, it's my house. It's the old members that they have. As you see, it's probably, probably books. We don't, it's probably. We'll talk to the. Why the matter is called, I don't know. All the issues of money that were born. Don't make, probably was diagnosed. Because, like I said, if you do not increase the money, but you're raising on. You cannot give extra money. But then it's kind of a nice five percent above the body. Which are the rates. I told you, all of you know. And if I say in what means, there is money for day, evening, night, and morning, isn't it? And I remember, I proved it. And all the. As for, I told you. But it's not subservient, that's the question. They are dying by day. If the people that go to sleep after the first part was. And at times, best address, it's not about the fact. Now, we are transmitted. We will be looking at best practices. Best practices, I will give you those things. However, dimension and consideration committee. We gave program that's very close. However, I've been informed that council, as I address this. So I know we are not communicating over dimension or we are not at rock. But like they said, what you are hiding from your black man, put it in the. And all the people that was disappointed. So we are taking all of this. Whatever we are studying, as we talk to council. Who will talk to them. But let us, we are something. Forum for communication and to solve our problems as an entity first. And not every day would draw to council. The day to day, my university is with management of persons. And this is where most trial, the number of lessons it was. And together, how we can know the women, and draw the draw to council. But the things where we know that it may, and then ask, and it's for everybody. Love us, or it's get us. In the past, I would be not meant to. It's not, I'm not meant to. And may not only to solve our problems. So that's what I would say. I want to thank you for coming. And I wish us, you present, that is. So that's what I would say. I want to thank you for coming. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chancellor. May I invite Mrs. Antungbo. Who will be to honor present for total time. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chancellor. May I invite Mrs.
Good morning, Mr. Regis. I would like to correct Mr. Regis, sir. My name is Olato. I would like to stand on the system approach. And I. I'm being the voice for everybody here. And I would like to say thank you, sir, to the Vice Chancellor. Thank you for. Your presentation. For. For the. Amazing one. We also appreciate your mission and mission that we have known. Senior today. And I will. I want us to appreciate that we have been through so many appreciating. The past month. But since they received it. We have been trying to change. I believe we are in a period of change. And I. But I can not speak for another person. But I still believe. After what we have had today, we are. All of us. Won't change for the next. I believe I'm speaking your mind. Change for the next. So, sir, Mr. Visi. The Vice Chancellor of change. We want you to know that we are ready to pray. To take our best. So. Mr. Visi, promise to the rest. I'm saying that many of us, we call. We resume for example, or just a. And some people have asked me that maybe to my age. And then I expected to go by. I know what we are supposed to. It was really. I'm just saying the Bible. I believe in my belief, I will make. And so we also want to say thank you, sir. For today and for you. Thank everybody that have come today. You have shaped my, you have shaped your mommy. You have shaped the Vice Chancellor, Tony, those people that were waiting for you. You have shaped every. Actually, I, I want to say that, that we know what I'm doing is a high. So. Tony knows that, Lord, we have seen, Jesus did. Thank you very much. I have this function on the Vice Chancellor. To openly invite Professor Sunaimai to keep the closing prayer. I have this function on the Vice Chancellor. To openly invite Professor Sunaimai. The day of our anniversary, thank you, Massimo. Give thanks to Almighty God for the masses. For all good is my. We are feeling it all of us, both there, for our. My son, my daughter, my son, so we all are in the shining light. Very fast, oh, darling.
Please, please stay where you are. Allow me to hear you, please. Light music, light music, please.